Okay, it's nine o'clock. I'll call to order the July 12 meeting of the Celine County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weef?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Yes, we have. Now if we'd all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's time now for the citizens' input where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and on items that are not on our agenda.
Norman Mano, Solana, are we discussing about selling the jail anymore or what are you going to do with it or would that be discussion down the road? It's surplus equipment when you get the new one. That'd help pay down the bond.
I'm sure it's on our radar and no decision has been made yet. Anyone else? All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of contracts and agreements, approval of disposition of property, approval of counts payable, approval of payroll, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Any commissioners wish to address this?
I just want to make an observation from the May 24th, 22 minutes that regarding Simpson Road, and I see that the proper people are here, so I want to mention it, but they thought that the project would be completed by the middle of June before harvest. Well, it's the middle of July and it's not completed. Just an observation. I know it's rained a little, but that was after the completion date originally anyway, so.
Dearly noted.
I'm watching.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We now move into our action items. Item number one.
RFA 167-22 Workforce Incentive Beneficiary Agreement. Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Before you have a request for action, retention and recruiting of staff, particularly medical staff, has been difficult across the board, not just with us, but especially in the specialized area of nursing. In order to help bolster that workforce that works with older adults and individuals with disabilities, K-Dads has released a grant program as part of their ARPA funding aimed at increasing the retention and recruitment of staff that provide the health and community-based services as direct service workers and their immediate supervisors. This would be our home health RNs and our home health aides who provide services for those older adults and individuals with disabilities under that Medicaid waiver and in their home. So this agreement began on June 15, although we couldn't get in front of you until now, and ends on March 31, 2023. This provides a one-time retention bonus for those hired before February 1, 2022, and a one-time recruitment bonus for those hired after February 1, 2022, provided they complete the first two months of employment. That part is per the grant. I'm sure we can look at additional time if necessary. Applicable taxes do apply. The grant total is $19,368 and the schedule is as follows. The retention full-time bonus of $2,000 for, and I didn't have it on here, but it's six staff, which are the three RNs and three home health aides that are currently employed, and recruitment full-time employee at 1,500 for three staff, which would be two RNs, and if we end up adding the homemaker position, that one as well. So the alternative for action, of course, are to send myself back for more information. Approve the grant as presented or deny the grant. We recommend approving the RFA as a means of retaining the hard-working staff that we have and recruiting the staff that we need. The added expense on the budget of paying out these grants will not impact our bottom line expense, given that we have significant salary savings that have been unspent within our budget this year. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
One question. You mentioned that this is a grant for these funds?
Correct, sir.
But then you mentioned that you have monies in your account.
So basically, the expense for paying these, even though it would end up being a net zero because of that added expense that wasn't originally planned for, because we have salary that has not been used in our bottom line budget, the additional expense will not impact our bottom line expense for this budget year. So in other words, I'm not going to go over, it won't take us over our budget expense that's approved.
And Jason, HR administrators okay with this request?
I've discussed it with Phil. We haven't discussed with HR yet, but we were on a very short timeline. They originally wanted this back two weeks ago, and we had to get an extension due to the, two times that you guys were not meeting until today.
I'm sorry, and Jason, I'm having a hard time getting my head wrapped around this. It's a grant.
Yes, sir.
It's a one-time payout.
Yes, sir.
So why does your budget even part of the conversation? It has no impact at all.
Well, because my.
Okay, let me try this. So the Health Department's a budgeted fund, so per state statute, you cannot spend in excess of your expenditure authority as adopted by the commission, regardless of whether you have a grant or not. So we could flow this through a grant fund outside of his regular budget, but that would involve setting up an entire new fund, and so they typically get a lot of grants within their budget, so the easier choice is to deposit the money into their budget and expend it out. However, they still need the expenditure authority to do that, and so that's where he's saying he's had the salary savings that would permit him to actually make the expenditure.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to say.
That's what you said.
You said it much better.
Questions of Jason? No, I'll bring it back to the commission. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment? Thank you, Monty. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the K-Dads grant as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 167-22 Workforce Incentive Beneficiary Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Item number two.
RFA 162-22 Resolution 222364 Extension of Special Road Construction Fund. That's for Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning, commissioners. So in 2017, the commission adopted a resolution providing for a one mil annual levy for a special road construction fund. The state statute that allows for that requires that that be readopted after five years if it's still needed. Staff believes that additional funds for special road construction continue to be needed and recommends that you adopt a resolution extending for another five years. This would be then published twice and subject to a 90-day protest period before going into effect, which is why we're bringing it to you this early. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
When you said five years, this can be looked at, though, quicker than that if need be. Is that my understanding?
You.
Obviously, my question is confusing.
You could, you adopt the budget on an annual basis, so you could levy less than one mil at any time during those five years. You could not levy in excess of one mil during those five years per the terms of this resolution.
So we can change, yeah. Okay, that's what I'm after.
We had Justin in the audience, and I know that in our study sessions with Roden Bridge, he had many, many projects that were addressed that would be out of this one mil special road construction. So in setting through those study sessions, I see the importance of it. I also look back and see what we've gleaned out of it and the good that's taken place, so. Is there any public comment? No, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt the resolution and extend levy.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 161-22 Resolution 22-2364 Extension of the Special Road Construction Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Okay, item number three.
RFA 162-22 Update and Propose, excuse me, Changes for ARPA Funding. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So I'm sorry I keep bringing federal funding requests to you. It seems like every single meeting, we have an item on the American Rescue Plan Act, but felt like this one ties into a couple of the other items you'll be considering later this morning, so wanted to get it in front of you. There are essentially three requests today. One is to approve a program that you've seen a couple of times, but you hadn't formally considered with the Community Housing Development Corporation, more popularly known as the CHODO, and that would be to do rehab of owner-occupied houses in Celine County. The second request would be to modify the award that you previously made to the city of Gypsum. The city of Gypsum applied for $50,000 as part of the Clean Water Celine County Grants, which you approved back in December. However, when we got the grant agreement with them, discovered that they had actually started the project before March of 2021, which is a no-no pursuant to the rules of the federal legislation. So we've had extensive discussions with them, and they've identified an alternate project that is still $50,000 and still wastewater-related, so would like to substitute that project. We just felt it was important to disclose that before we bring back a grant agreement with them. And then finally, moving around a little bit of money, we have been able to free up some additional money from other items and would like to dedicate about 80-plus thousand more for the courtroom construction and also introduce a new program in the Health Department. And so those are the requests today, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
One question, Phil, on the wastewater project in Gypsum. Did that go back through that committee that?
No, we didn't take it back through the committee. We were trying to do as close to the intent of the original award as possible, but we did not reconvene the committee for this particular one. Certainly can if that's the will of the commission.
Any other questions from the commission? Any public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the programs and reallocate funds as outlined in RFA 162-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 162-22 Update and Propose Changes to ARPA Funding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item number four.
RFA 163-22 Resolution 22-2365 Employee Organization Policy. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
And so, public employees in the United States are not covered under the National Labor Relations Act. Each state adopts its own policy regarding employee organizations. In Kansas, we have what's called the Public Employer Employee Relations Act, or PIRA. And Celine County was historically, sorry, PIRA is an opt-in system, so each local government must decide whether it wishes to be covered by PIRA. Celine County was historically in PIRA and in, about 21 years ago, decided to get out of PIRA. We were kind of a leader in that movement. Most of the other counties that had previously opted into PIRA have now withdrawn from PIRA, but Celine County felt, back in 2001, that it was important to continue to provide an opportunity for the employees to have an organized voice in setting terms and conditions of employment, even though we had chosen to withdraw from the federal, or sorry, from the state act. So we adopted a local policy on employee organizations back in 2001. That policy has served us okay for 21 years. I would say it has seen some diminishing returns over time. And so as a consequence of that, the commission tasked me this year to go have some conversations with our existing employee organizations about potential changes to the policy. So Resolution 22-2365, as proposed today, contains an Exhibit A, which would rescind and replace the existing employee organization's policy with the new proposed policy. The major change is to try and broaden out the groups of employees that are represented by, through the process, that in the past, there have not been, there's been a group of employees that have sort of fallen through the cracks, sworn law enforcement, but at the management level that kind of aren't cleanly represented in the current system. And then there have just been, over time, there has been a lot less participation in the general employee bargaining group, and so this represents an attempt to try and make sure that employees in all different areas of the county have a voice. So choices for the commission to consider, you could certainly go back under PIRA, which is the preference of the employee bargaining groups, and they asked me to express that to you. You could adopt the policy as proposed, which is staff's recommendation, or you could just rescind the 2001 resolution in its entirety, which would be very consistent with what many other counties around the state do, which is not providing a formal voice for employees in the process of setting terms and conditions of employment. So I'd be happy to go into any additional details, answer any questions the commissioners may have.
So if we adopt this Resolution 222365, it's basically what you just said, option B is what you've said of the three?
In the situation, why is it that the bargaining units want to go back to PIRA? Do they feel that there's more from the state level that'll provide them a better outcome?
I think they believe that there is a little bit more strength under the state law. There's certainly a process where they can appeal unfair practices in a state process. There is a recognized grievance process, some additional things like that. I mean, it's more of a, it's more of a union environment when you're under PIRA, and so, you know, that's their preference.
Currently, we have two organizations that we recognize. Is that in my fault?
That's correct, yes.
The FOP and the SCAPE?
Correct.
And I think that most of FOP, most of the employees at the jail and the sheriff's office department are members of that organization. Do you know how many of the remaining people belong to SCAPE?
I've heard different numbers over time. I believe it's a single-digit number. Eight was sort of the last number. That's not something that I keep track of, but.
It just does, to me, I have a hard time recognizing an organization that claims that they represent approximately 250 employees, and only eight of them belong to the organization itself. That troubles me that we enter into good-faith bargaining with six or seven or eight people, when the rest of the employees do not even, don't pay their dues or don't want to belong to that organization, yet they're being represented by that group.
Yes, so the proposed policy would attempt to remedy that in two different ways. One, it does include a provision that would allow the commission to force a vote in that unit if you don't think that they represent a majority anymore. And then, secondly, as I stated previously, it also broadens, through creation of this new employee council, broadens the representation for all employees, whether they choose to belong to a recognized bargaining unit or not.
Okay. Any other questions of the commission? Any comments from the public?
Norman Mano, again. You brought up a good point, Robert, about unions. Kansas is a right-to-work state. You do not have to pay union dues. You don't even have to join a union to get the benefits. I would, the people ought to pay union dues because the benefits are a lot better than a non-union job, because I've been in both places. I paid my dues. Ninety-eight percent of us voted for it, and we were never there.
Any other public comment? Phil, how many Celine County employees are eligible to be part of SCAPE?
Two hundred-ish.
And only eight of them decide to be a member of that. I have to echo what Commissioner Vidrickson said. I think, I don't know if SCAPE is doing, is, it doesn't seem like the employees embrace SCAPE, and I don't know if we would be served to namescape as their representative, but.
I agree also, but I think this resolution gets us down the road to do this, so.
Any other comments? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 22-2365 as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 163-22 Resolution 222365 Employee Organization Policy. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item number five.
RFA 164-22 Movement of County Offices to Support New Courtrooms. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Back to you, Philip.
Yes. Apologize for stacking them all up today, but the Commission had a special study session to discuss the fact that we have been awarded, our Judicial District has been awarded three new judgeships as part of the new state budget, and that will require construction of two new courtroom spaces. We've kicked around a number of different options, including the potential of trying to relocate one of those courtrooms outside of this building. All of those options appear to have problems. This, the option that is being presented today, I'm not going to pretend is not without problems, but probably has the best potential for getting us the courtrooms in the soonest manner possible. So, this relies upon us moving my office out of the building, with the exception that myself and three others of our staff would move to where the planning and zoning staff is now. Planning and zoning staff and GIS would join the rest of our office across the street at 229 North 9th. And then, our offices would get occupied by the county appraiser's office, and the county attorney's office would move down to where the appraiser and GIS is currently, as well as into Room 109. The Commission asked me at our study session to see if I could come up with answers to a number of different questions, one of which is what other offices could move across the street to allow me to remain in the building, so I think I've addressed that. Could Room 107B be incorporated along with Room 109? I've talked with the city about that. They are not huge fans of that idea, but they're willing to do that if necessary. They would ask that we go back and examine the building use agreement if we do that. Could additional space be freed up in the basement of this building? There is one space that could be used for the mailroom. Can an exterior elevator be added to the north side of the building? That's possible. Most of those exterior elevators that I were able to find are not what I would call very heavy-duty. And so, if you're talking about inmate transport, you probably want something a little bit more rugged. And, but we do think that there is a potential right inside the front doors on the first floor. You could have an elevator that did not stop on the second floor and went directly to the third floor, and would tie into part of the proposed renovation space. And then, would temporary relocation of an off-site courtroom, dealing with only domestic and civil matters, allow us to avoid spending funds until other building modifications could be made? I met with judges and with court clerk staff about that. And in addition to the concerns around security, they brought up a number of other logistical pieces that, it's not impossible, but it's not desirable. So, we're sort of back to the plan that was presented to the Commission on June 22nd, with the one modification of planning going across the street instead of me. Be happy to answer questions. The recommendation today would be that you go ahead and direct the relocation of offices over to 229 North 9th, and that you authorize the Chair to sign an agreement with 310 Architects for Project Management Services. They are the architects that are working with us on the master plan. They've gone over and examined at 229 North 9th, and that was, we did not do an RFP. That was the quickest way to get something, and so, we're working on a time crunch here. We are doing an RFP for architects for the courtroom services. Those came in last week, I believe, or maybe the week before, met with Todd and the judges, and we have narrowed, we received five proposals. We've narrowed that down to three, and we'll be doing interviews with those three over the next two weeks, and bring a recommendation back to your Commission. I think that's all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Phil, the number's not jumping out at me right now, but during, under the budget impact, it says the space across the road is somewhere around 200,000 or a little more. Overall, the number that I keep trying to remember is that $2 million? Is that the total estimate of this project overall? Is that?
Three.
Three million?
Two million.
I just want the public to know that this isn't something that we've just dreamed up. This is a state mandated and not funded by the state. We have to fund it. The state has mandated. We have to do this. We don't have a choice. And the timing makes it even more costly, I think, because it has to be done supposedly by the first of the, the courts are supposed to be implemented by the first of the year? Is that correct? So, our hands are tied. And when we're spending local money, but it's mandated by the state, we don't have a choice.
Tell me what is envisioned to be permanent moves? Is the district attorney permanently coming downstairs, or when the renovation is finished, they go back upstairs?
There would be no space for the district attorney, the county attorney's office to be on the third floor. The third floor would be completely occupied from this point forward. We are engaging in conversations with the building authority about the potential of building expansion or construction of a building on the north lawn. And so, there is the potential, I would not consider the county attorney's move to Room 108 to be a permanent move. I would think of that as temporary, but temporary being in the three-to-five-year timeframe until we're able to make other choices about where other things go. Certainly echo Commissioner Vidrickson's comments, but we'll say that, you know, the sort of the saving grace of this is that we were already engaged in a master planning process to try and, you know, this is just sort of rushing us to get to someplace I think we would have gone eventually anyway.
And again, of that three-plus million that this project would cost, how much of that is being funded by ARPA funds?
Yeah, we're up to 2.28 now that we've been able to identify from those funds, so, yeah, the majority.
I noticed that in our special meeting, there were some, obviously frustrations, some bitter comments, and I think this is just going to be a tough project, and...
Yeah, I don't think this is anybody's first choice, including the courts.
Right.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the actions as outlined in RFA 164-22.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved. And second, we approve RFA 164-22, Movement of County Offices to Support New Construction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six.
RFA 165-22, 2023 Smolin Township Budget. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So, this is one of those, why are we doing this items? The Smolin Township currently does not have any township officers, and so, as a consequence, last year, your Commission acted in the stead of the township officers and adopted the 2022 budget for them. We're asking that you adopt a 2023 budget for them as well. It's a pretty small budget, but it does require a revenue-neutral rate hearing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we actively try to persuade the citizens of Smolin to find people to represent them and be on their governing body?
Yeah, I mean, the Clerk's Office has had a number of conversations. I believe some Commissioners have had conversations. Mike Montoya has had some conversations. So, I, like, we've asked. I guess the good news in talking with the Clerk's Office is if they don't get anyone who gets elected this year, then they will have had vacancies for two consecutive years, and at that point, your Commission could choose to combine them with a neighboring township or dissolve them, so...
Any questions, Commission?
If that time, that, let's say that it would dissolve, does that, and they don't have any budget, does that mean that the lights wouldn't come on?
If they dissolve completely, the County Commission would assume their responsibilities, so we'd just fold it into the county's budget.
Okay. And that's what they're assuming? Gotcha.
And the taxes collected in that case would become the county's and not the townships?
It would still be a separate levy, but it wouldn't, it would be administered by us. It wouldn't be, yeah. There wouldn't be a checkbook for them.
Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we direct staff to move forward with the adoption of a budget for Smolin Township.
Second the motion.
It's been moved. And second, we approve RFA 165-22, 2023 Smolin Township Budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Now we're getting to the meat and taters here. Item number seven.
RFA 166-22, 2023 Budget. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So, yes, as the Chairman noted, this is a much larger budget than Smolin Township. This is the county's overall budget, in excess of $16 million. So, we are trying to construct a budget that does a number of different things, including funding county services at levels that the public needs and expects, funding adequate compensation for county employees, and also not soaking the taxpayers of Celine County through the adoption of too high of a tax rate for ad-vorn property taxes. And so, those different goals are always in tension with each other each year, and this year, we've been helped a little bit by the fact that the tax collections are very good, particularly our sales tax is up substantially, and our valuations are up substantially. And so, as a consequence, I've been able to bring you a budget that would keep the mill levy approximately the same. Actually, goes down a little bit, but then, once you take the TIF out of the calculation, I expect it to go back up to approximately where it is now. And within that, mill levy budget would be able to fund employee raises in accordance with the study that Wichita State did for us, and also largely fund other requests from departments for increased operational costs, including additional staffing at the jail, additional costs for oil-based products and asphalt construction in Roden Bridge, and some additional allocations to some of our outside agencies. Was not able to fund everything that was requested, and so, I have included in the RFA today a list of those places where my recommendations differ from what departments or outside agencies requested. I'd be happy to go into any of those in discussion. Have also included the special district budgets, and so, five of the seven rural fire districts would require a revenue-neutral rate hearing, as would the county, under the proposal to keep the mill levy the same. One thing I will note, in my report, it says that Fire District Number Two wishes to fund a new computer program for fire reporting. I did get a clarification. It's not actually a new program. It's, their current program is moving to the cloud, and that's more expensive, and so, that's what that additional $4,000 is. But with that, I think I will stop talking and answer questions from Commissioners and have a discussion with the public. You would ultimately request that if you accept these funding levels, that direct staff to come back next week with the notice that would be required to hold the hearing to exceed the revenue-neutral rate.
All right.
I'd like to make a couple of observations on the very first part of it with the allocations. North Central Kansas, Central Flin Hills Agency on aging. And, you know, I remember the, when they were here and made their proposal, that we asked for several numbers back from them, and I think we didn't really get them, but we got the Meals on Wheels number was the only thing that they replied with, and that didn't match up with ours. I just want to make that as an observation. The other part is the recycling center. I think it would behoove us if we were to fund them to the $10,000 that they're asking for, rather than $3,500, $6,500 difference. I think we need to partner with the city on that, to that level, anyway. I want to continue to have a good working relationship with the city. I don't know how that would sit with some of them if we didn't fund that. I mean, for that amount of money, I just think it's important for us to fund that allocation, and that's my personal opinion for that part of it. I don't know what anyone else thinks of it, but...
I would agree on your second point, yeah.
Yeah. That's two.
Well, I agree also. I don't know what the recycling center's total budget is, but it's open to the whole county to be used, and I know a lot of county people do take advantage of it. And also, their facility on ash that allows you to get rid of hazardous waste, I mean, they open that up countywide, and I think that's very, very kind of them to give county residents an opportunity and a place to dispose of these items, so I would concur with you, Commissioner.
I would concur also.
Yes.
Walk me through the process if we pass this today of potential changes, if anything happens.
So, what would occur from this point forward is next Tuesday, I would come back with the notice that we're required to send to the county clerk to hold the hearing, the hearing to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. That would go out to all the taxpayers in the community in early... That would go out to all the taxpayers in the community in early August. At the same time, we would also publish in the newspaper, the notice of that hearing, as well as the notice of the typical budget hearing. And then we would come back on August 23rd would be the day that we would finally adopt the budget. Parallel to that process, we have asked departments, if any of them disagree with the recommendations, that they want to appeal. Those appeals would come before you next Tuesday and would ask that you make a final decision on those on July 26th, so that that would be in advance of when we would publish the budget. And then from that point, from the point where it gets published, you can always go down, but you can't go up. So, yeah.
Once it's published, okay. So have we heard exactly how much valuations have gone up in Sling County? I mean, my understanding, it's kind of hearsay, it's been five, six, or whatever. Has Sean ever come up with a figure, and maybe I've just not heard it?
Yes, so in your budget packet today, or in, I'm sorry, in your commission agenda packet for today, there were the draft state budget forms. And that number, which off the top of my head is 667 and some change, that is the number from the appraiser through the clerk's office.
I missed that, so thanks for clarification.
Yeah, that is, that is, of course, that number changes until December. And so December 1 is when the clerk will actually calculate everything finally, but that is the number that the budget is based on.
And that, that's just helpful to know because keeping the mill levy the same still means a tax increase.
It, it does still mean a tax increase for many residents in terms of, you know, the, if, if your valuation went up, you know, your, your taxes go up. There was a change in state law this year, increased the residential exemption for some folks, and so there's a, a small percentage of people for whom it would go down.
Phil, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear the number, didn't hear the number that you said that the valuations went up?
Well, the, the total valuation is in there, it's 667 million. That represents, I believe, about a 7.4% increase based on last year's valuation.
Well, I'm comfortable with the, your work that you've put through. I just want to make sure that I leave myself open to some change over the next week or the next two weeks, so.
Well, there's a couple more questions that I have regarding the entire proposal, if I, if I may, are we ready to go to that point?
No, yeah, please.
In, in the, the emergency management health department recommendation that the requested public information officer be funded from the health department rather than the emergency department, based on available grant funding. I, I think that's probably an important statement, the very last part, the grant funding. But I'm, I'm in favor of having that position, but I, I'm just questioning why it would come under a department rather than the administration. And I, I would think that an information officer would be useful to every single department within the, the county. I mean, Roden Bridge, Engineering, Health Department, so on, Sheriff's Department. I'm just questioning, and I assume it's based on this, this grant funding, is why we're going to put it underneath the health department?
That's correct, yes. I, I agree with your, your statement that, yes. I think having a public information officer is valued to the county as a whole, but I will tell you, I wouldn't have recommended funding it this year if, if we needed to bring it out of the general fund. I would, I, it would, it would have been one of the things that would have been on the chopping block, just in terms of making the bottom line balance. The availability of the grant funding through the health department, which I believe is for a two-year period, gets us to get that position established and then bring it into a broader countywide service over time.
Grants normally have other things attached to them, and my, my question would be, if we put this under the health department, took a health grant, healthcare grant to fund this, would, would we be overstepping our boundaries by having that person or that office do things for Roden Bridge or, or any other department? Would that be legal?
So the, the, the position would need to definitely be focused on health-related matters. Now, I will say, there, there are some theories under which health, you know, lots of things are health, right? And so Roden Bridge, for example, notice of road closures and those kinds of things might, you might be able to make an argument that there's some health-related impacts to that. But yes, I think the scope of the position would be more limited when it's funded through the health department, absolutely. But again, I see it as a choice between having a limited position and having no position. I think that's really the choice that we face this year, because otherwise, we'd have to cut something else out of the general fund to fund it there.
And do, will we have to go beyond the grant funding this year to fund that position? In other words, is there going to be any cost to our budget whatsoever if, if we create this position?
I, I will say, I think that depends on how the position gets used. If it's a, if it's a health department position and it's used for health department purposes, then no, there should not be any impact to other budgets. If we start lopping other work on top of it, then yes, we'll have to come up with resources to, to make that happen.
I had another question. It was under expo. Didn't I see that you were not recommending a new pickup for over there, but a used pickup? Did I see that, I don't see it here right in front of me.
It's actually under equipment rather than under expo, yes, that they requested $60,000 for a new vehicle, or in the alternative, $45,000 for a used vehicle, and I'm recommending the $45,000.
$45,000, is that what you said? I, I didn't ever see that number. And, and my, my point there is, used vehicles have the cost, or, you know, they've, it's risen astronomically as, as opposed to a new truck. And it's just a thought, but you've put a number on it, so that.
Yeah, it's a dollar.
Clarifies it to some degree. They don't really go out of town with it, I don't think, very much, and that, that clarifies that for me. I, I like the things that you've cut on here, too, cut back.
Well, thank you. I tried to keep the commission's goals in mind.
Well, it's important. I mean, there's several things on here that have, you know, we're just not up here approving everything that's been asked for. There's, there's things that we're looking at and cutting back, and every little bit helps. And I think Commissioner Shadwick made a really good point, is that just because we're keeping the, the mill levy approximately the same, doesn't mean your taxes aren't going up. It's probably going to happen.
And to further your point is, if we okay this budget, these items still have to come back to us, and times change. So, you know, if that position in three months comes back to us and it's not to our liking, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that we have to okay it. Same with a, a road grader or, or anything else. But a budget doesn't mean that it's spent, they still have to come back to us, so, because times will, times are changing fast.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Not, is there any comment from the public?
It's budget time, and I'm back here in shades, Selena.
You're welcome.
I was really pleased to see a lot of the budget on the internet, and I really appreciated your comments. It was hard for me to read, I'd already exhausted the printer ink at the library, so I'm not as prepared as I want to be. I, in the past, have gone and asked for printed documents, and I'll be back to, to do that later. But as far as what's going on here, I wanted to ask, just, this is one of those things, if Mr. Smith Haynes keeps on the top of his head what the budget was for 2013, 10 years ago, how much has the budget grown in 10 years? I'm thinking it was $39, 40, $41, $42 million. And so with it being at 62 million, that's like a 50% increase in 10 years. And I don't think in 2013, the health department was enmeshed here in the county, but most of that is flow-through funds. I think there's just been, I, I can go through and name like the Special Road Construction Fund and some of the other things that, that might have gradually over time pushed the county expenditures up. And I'm not saying that that's necessarily inappropriate. I, I just suspect that the current budget and budgets in the years past have been largely involving costs with the sheriff's office and Roden Bridge. And I do, on, on the topic of the new jail, want to say that I appreciated, two years ago, the commissioners and the sheriff's staff really went out and sold the idea of the new jail at the, what I thought was way too high price tag of 89 million. I thought it could have been done for 30 million. And now with kind of post-COVID budget woes, you know, maybe there, maybe more people will see that as a little bit wiser proposition. But I've long been frustrated that the cost of the, the jail itself, we house a lot of people from out of county, and if they commit a crime here in Sling County, they stay in our jail, they use our community corrections or other support services, they use our courts, and that's kind of what drives a large part of the costs. And I know, like, Ellsworth County faced the same issue, and they are nowhere near in size, but they chose not to chase down every person driving I-70 or 135 who was speeding to, to be able to search and go through a forfeiture process on drugs. So I'd kind of like to suggest that maybe that, that's a gap the, the, the whole governing entities have not been willing to look at. I'm disappointed that no money was recommended for surge, the SLINA initiative on restorative justice. I don't know what their proposal was, I don't know how they're currently structured. So I can't really advocate for them, but it was an alternative to just locking people up and putting them in jail, and yes, having treatment beds and, and those kind of things going, but it was an alternative meant for first offenders and, and younger kids. I'm also disappointed that at a time when, because of COVID, mental health needs are so prevalent, that the Central Kansas Mental Health funding of 29,000 is coming out of ARP. It means that no, to me, it means no additional funding went to Central Kansas Mental Health as might be appropriate of the needs. And I, if I'm wrong, I can see where I, I very could well be. But I look forward to seeing the other documents, the yearly summaries and that. And I just think people might want to be aware that over 10 years, the budget for the county, I believe, has gone up dramatically.
Any other comment?
Morning, Ms. Selena. When we were having town meetings discussing the new jail, do any of you recall what the construction company representative said about what is causing this problem? They're the company that's got the contract, I believe his name is Jeff. Go back and look at what he said, what is causing these problems?
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the recommended funding levels as presented, with the exception of the Selena Recycling Center, which will increase to 10,000.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approved RFA 166 dash 22, the 2023 budget.
Can, can we have some discussion just for a second? And it's a question to Phil regarding comments, public comments that, on Central Kansas Mental Health, we're not just funding them for 29,000, it's almost a million dollars. And we totally awarded their total requested increase for this coming year, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's in the $300,000 range.
300, I don't know why I hear that.
It's, yes, so the, the increment of 29,000 is the increase from 2022 to 2023 in their request. And that's what I was recommending come out of the ARPA funds. In, in addition, we have worked with them on the co-responder program out of ARPA funds, and we have set aside about $200,000 in ARPA funds for other projects with Central Kansas Mental Health. So I think the commission does recognize the importance of mental health services. The other thing that I heard addressed was the SLINA Initiative for Restorative Justice, and I will say, on the consent calendar today, the commission approved a grant to them in the amount of $8,000. So they're not being funded out of the budget, but they are receiving some county pass-through funding, so, yeah.
And, and bottom line, on Central Kansas Mental Health, they are getting, we are making it so that they are getting all of the money they requested, it's just not coming out of the Sling County budget, it's coming out of ARPA funds or wherever you said, correct? That's a question.
Well, it will be coming out of the county's budget in the sense that we will take in a revenue and then expend the funds, but yes, it will.
It won't be any tax.
Will not have a tax impact to Sling County taxpayers for that.
Other than the.
Increment.
Other than the 300 and some thousand that we gave anyway. And back to the question.
Any other comments? We have a motion in a second, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor of passing RFA 166 dash 22, the 2023 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. All right, we now move into informational items.
Emergency Management Update, Michelle Barkley, Director.
Morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I will keep this brief. Next slide. If there's anything to take away from my update, it is that all of Sling County's COVID-19 disaster and the December 15 windstorm disasters have been closed with FEMA, and we have received that funding back. Roden Bridge and the Senior Center did their closeout meeting with FEMA yesterday. Next slide. And next slide. Just a little recap of what we have done in the last quarter. We had a tornado drill, it was full-scale that we participated in in Dickinson County. As you can see, there was an abundant amount of people that participated for the city of Abilene, Dickinson County, the Kansas Incident Management Team and the state as well. We did a fishing exercise with the LEPC back in June, ransomware tabletop with. with, uh, the city and county IT departments, and we also did a tornado, uh, simulation with the unmanned aircraft systems team for the Police Department. Next slide. We are looking forward, uh, in September to doing a hazmat, uh, spill drill with, uh, Union Pacific, along with the UAV team for the Fire Department and the Police Department. Uh, we have a airfield exercise that we are looking to do. Uh, if you remember last year, we also did one similar as an active shooter out at the bombing range. We're just gonna transition that over, and the airside will be the main player instead of the Army. And, uh, Blue Beacon wishes to continue. We did an active shooter drill with them back in 2018. They're wishing to participate, um, and expand that, so we are looking to have that take place in October. Next slide. Another great note, um, as you can see, when I was back at my last update, we were in a moderate drought stage. As it is right now, we are not in a drought, though I will encourage everyone to continue to drink water, because I can't do anything about the heat, but at least it's raining. Next slide. To do with ARPA, we are one of the projects there. We asked for roughly five hundred kits, and we've slimmed that back down, um, where you guys will fund about a hundred and twenty of that, and the remainder funds, we will go to outside sponsors to meet that five hundred. But as a pilot project, we did put together thirty disaster kits and present those to kids ages five to eleven at the YMCA. We went over the purpose of the items and the kits, how to prepare for disasters and the types of disasters that we are accustomed to here in Saline County and Kansas. Next slide. And this is just a recap of the calls for service in April and May that Rural Fire has had. They continue to support the new radio system and are eagerly waiting for the last two towers to be live. Um, we will do coverage testing in August, and they will be participating heavily in that process. Next slide. And I can honestly say this actually works, because we did it at 3:00 AM this morning. So Rural Fire District Three and Rural Fire District Seven joined in an auto mutual aid agreement, similar to the auto mutual aid agreement that is between District Five and Seven. So there's a portion of each response area where both districts will respond to a call if it falls in that area. Um, there was a structure fire this morning, uh, that both districts responded to. It was a false alarm, but it was amazing to see the response from both districts present. And do you have any questions?
On that automatic mutual aid, uh, if, if one district goes into another, they're dispatched, and if they go into that, uh, will it be the first-arriving company, will be the, uh, incident command, or whoever?
So, the way the districts are set up, so if District Seven is responding into District Three's mutual aid area, District Three is the primary response, because that is their original district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two.
Road and Bridge update, Darren Fischel, Administrator.
Morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is our bi-monthly update for the Maintenance Division. Um, we did send ten employees to LTAP training, uh, manual and uniform traffic control devices. Uh, we completed our county-wide duripatch repair. We also did some at the Senior Center. Um, we did some yard entrance. Next slide. We had, at our yard, we had some, uh, we did some partnership with the city, because this is Airport Road. Next slide. And the city will come back later and concrete that, but it was, it was affecting our trucks. Um, next slide, please. Our new excavator that the commission approved in January did arrive, um, this week. We did some, also did some trash pickups countywide, and this is to date, because we did have some discussion about what trash pickups. We've had thirty-one trash pickups, uh, costing, uh, thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and that's for the manpower and what it takes to ca- take it to the dump. We dug two section corners for engineering. Next slide, please. We did have some flooding over the last two months with the, with the heavy rains locally. You can see here where most of the area was affected. Um, there were forty-one areas with, uh, about twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of damage. Uh, we were very lucky, because all of the rivers and streams were full, so we started tracking the damage in case it was to turn into a FEMA recovery event. Next slide, please. This just shows some of the drift we went out and picked up. Next slide, please. This is pretty typical of the damage, uh, heavy wash on the roads. Next slide, please. This is a road that completely washed out down by Linsburg. Next slide, please. This was some ditch cleaning work that we had done prior to the flood. Uh, next slide. And so it actually helped. Next slide, please. This is some more washout. Next slide, please. This is, we did replace seven culverts. This is, uh, out by the bombing range. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. And the, the Air Force did allow us to get out and clean away from that culvert, so it didn't, would drain properly. Uh, this is a culvert up on Humbugger Road, uh, very small culvert. Um, we did some work with the property owner, and the property owner had somebody come in and do the, um, the field work, if we would replace that with a larger culvert. Next slide, please. So we put in a steel pipe there, quarter-inch wall steel pipe, so we could actually raise the elevation of the culvert and, and a larger opening. Next slide, please. This is how we usually determine that, that there's something wrong with the road, there's a hole in the road, which means the culvert is rusted. Next slide, please. This is down on Hedberg Road. Next slide, please. Uh, due to the heavy rains and the flood, this is where we found out that a lot of these culverts were bad. Usually this happens in March or April, but they were pretty dry months. Uh, this was on Hedberg Road. We closed over the Fourth of July weekend. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We did repair and rebuild three miles of Simpson Road from Waterwell to McReynolds. This is, uh, Simpson Road looking north of Waterwell. Next slide, please. We just went in there and regraded the road, rebuilt the height of the road with the dirt that came out of the ditch, and then re-rocked it. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a map of the, uh, rural operators. They bladed two thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-four miles of roadway, did fourteen layback projects along with the flood repair, and we did repair and replace three hundred and two signs or posts. Um, I expect that number to go up, because that was before harvest. Um, so the next report will probably be a little bit, uh, larger. Next slide, please. This is every area of Saline County that had material or rock hauled to it. We hauled eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-ton of rock, two thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-ton of AB3, one thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-ton of sand, and one thousand, twenty-five tons of dirt. Our plans are, next slide, please. This is Statue Road up in the north-central part. Um, this is about a mile and a half between Ohio Street and Crystal Springs. We are currently upgrading that road. Next slide, please. This is simply some GeoGrid material. There are some very soft spots in that road that have clay, and this is the material that we purchased off of Purple Wave a couple of years ago, and we'll put aggregate over that, and the size of the aggregate will allow it to not push down into the clay and just have to keep dumping rock on it. So we're hoping that, that that's gonna help that situation. Next slide, please. This is a box down on Kip Road that is failing. Normally, in order to, um, get a box replacement, it would probably take about a year. By the time you designed the box, um, let it out to bid, um, which would probably be seventy to eighty thousand dollars, engineer sized it and came up with an alternative. Next, next slide, please, which is what they call half tanker cars. It's an old railroad tanker car. They buy from a place called The Railroad Yard, tanker car cut in half with, uh, bulkheads put on the end of it. And so hopefully, we can get that road reopened within, within a week or two. Um, our budget update, most line items are within the normal parameters, but fuel line item is, uh, probably gonna overrun by about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. You know, you paying twice for fuel at the pump, we're paying twice for it at, at the refinery also. So, any questions?
Just a quick question here. When you put that half-cut barrel in the ground, and I, and I know I've seen some of that, that you've put in, but do, on the edges there, do you put those concrete blocks in first for that to settle on?
Yes. We, we, we prepare the ground, and then we put the concrete blocks on the end, too, so it doesn't wash underneath, and then use it for sidewalk.
Okay, I was just thinking that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Darren? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Jail project update with Philip Smith-Haines, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Uh, this is our monthly update on, uh, progress out at the construction site for the new jail. Um, things continue to progress, and, uh, there's some photos in your packet. Uh, also updated you on current change order status. We are current, currently still, as of the end of, uh, June, uh, a total negative in change orders, uh, so about nine thousand dollars less than the original contract as of this point. Don't expect it to stay there, but that's, um, a good start, anyway, so far. But, um, there's a lot of activity, uh, not a lot of, uh, not a lot of particular things to report, so I thought I would, um, ask, uh, Lauren to bring up a video that, uh, the staff put together, uh, that shows sort of a, a stop motion since the beginning of the project, and I thought it was great to see what all has been accomplished, uh, out there since, uh, the first of December, so let's take a look at that. Well, Lawrence looking for that. Did any Commissioners have any questions about the current status out at the jail?
It's just amazing of how quick it went up once the, the cells got started and those concrete block walls went up and the steel goes up. It's just amazing of how.
Yeah, it's, it's really starting to look like a building out there now, and, um, so the video, if we can pull it up, actually, um, shows exactly what you're saying, because for so long, it looked like virtually nothing was, was happening, and then all of a sudden, it just started sprouting up, so.
Do we, do we have any idea on how many people are on-site out there working right now?
Uh, you know, I heard a number, um, and I, it was, eh, less than a hundred, but it was high, I wanna say it was eighty or so. Um, I could get you a more specific number, but it was.
That's about what I was guessing, too, just based on the amount of cars that are out there, and then, of course, the local people that are bringing in in their work vehicles, so that, you know, you don't necessarily see those cars, but, uh, you have to fight for a parking space out there if you wanna go.
You do, and I will also say that the, um, eh, the vast majority of those folks who are working are the subcontractors. I asked Turner, "How many of these people are actually you guys?", and they're like, um, "Seven, eight." The vast majority of, of the folks are the subs, so, looks like Lauren's giving me a thumbs up, so we must have the video now. Maybe? There we go. So I just thought that was a great little perspective, because you're over halfway into that. I think it's only twenty seconds long or something, but you're over halfway into it when it, all you see is dirt, 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 start to see a little bit of concrete, and then all of a sudden, um, it looks like a building, so.
Well, if there's any way they could ever get a video from the, uh, from the east-looking west to see all the steel structure that's going up now, that is really impressive.
Yeah, I drove by, and you can actually see the.
Right, right there where he's got the cursor, yeah.
Yeah, you can actually start to see the lobby, like, you, you see the, the roof of.
It looks like the building, it looks like the, the drawing, the depicted drawing.
Well, that is the goal, to make it look like what the drawings.
Well.
So.
It's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah. Anyway, that's all I had on the jail update today.
Item number four.
County Administrator's update.
I'll keep this one short and sweet. Uh, the Kansas Association of Counties, uh, does their legislative platform each year if we have any particular legislative items to consider. Um, I don't know, maybe something about county responsibility for courtrooms, or, I don't know. But, uh, if we have any items, they are requesting those back at the end of this month, uh, to start on their process, so they go through their committees and, uh, have it ready for presentation at the annual conference in October. Um, so, please, uh, let me know if you have anything, and we'll, um, get that submitted on the proper form. And that's all I had this morning.
Item five.
Commissioners' comments?
Comments from the Commissioners?
I, um, I was happy, obviously, that we're gonna continue to have air service, but, uh, that doesn't mean it's gonna be cheap. I tried to book a round-trip flight to Denver the other day with a six-week's notice, and it was six hundred and forty-four dollars, so. Which does not make it practical.
All right, uh, item number six.
Announcement.
The announcements. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five-zero.